Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. It's been a while since we've seen each other. So, thank you all for being here. We have Councilman Schmidt is joining us on the telephone. So, he is here with us as well, and we have a full council this afternoon. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Jewett.
Here. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It needs to be as amended.
As amended?
Yeah. Hand it out amendment sheets.
Okay. The agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and just let me read them. Item one, we amended by including the total tax levy rate and property and excise tax readings to as follows. Adopting FY nineteen, well, the reason for the amendment to reflect action taken on March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen to table for consideration of item thirteen on the regular session, so.
Just takes item thirteen and puts it on this agenda for tonight.
Yeah.
Or today, excuse me, it's not night.
Not yet.
Do we have a copy of that resolution?
Pardon?
Do we have a copy of that resolution?
No. You didn't have it last night either.
I know. Okay.
All right, so, last night, I just want to say a lot of healthy discussion. You know, everyone laid forth what their thoughts are, what their passions were. You know, folks had an opportunity again to talk to one another, come from one side of the table to the other side, or on the same side of the table, or whatever it was. But it was a great opportunity to really have some good heartfelt dialogue. The thing that I wanted to say, listening from what was being placed there on the agenda, and hearing conversations from the community, and listening to council, I think the biggest word that comes, well, one, there's no doubt that everyone cares for the city of Waterloo up here, and I'm going to say it. Folks are passionate about the issues of this community, and we may not necessarily see it all the same way, but in the end, you know, folks are serving because they want to do what they believe is best for the citizens of Waterloo. But another word comes to mind also, and that was the conversation of compromise, you know, kind of hearing people that may not necessarily feel the same way about a particular area try to meet somewhere in the middle, or not meet. But I'll just tell you, that was something that was very impressive for me to be able to see as well, so I want to compliment those council members that were having those types of conversations, even though there may be some differences. But one of the things I did here is the conversation about seeing how we can have an overall impact to the amount that citizens are able to keep in their pockets with regards to their tax askings, but also having a careful conversation of the levy rate and moving that forward. And I think what we're starting to see, it's not a perfect science all the time, and, you know, taking a look at staff and where we're at and the services that we provide, it's not a perfect science each time. But I kind of listened to all of those things, and just some areas, at least last night, where I believe that there could potentially be some compromise, and hearing from citizens over the course of the last couple of months, I kind of worked on a proposal for this morning based upon conversations last night, one that could potentially be a compromise. You know, I did hear we had anywhere from zero for the franchise fee to about one and a half to about two percent for the franchise fee, I heard, you know, uses of fund balance, I heard different positions to take out, to put back in. But it's not on here, but I will ask council to listen with an open heart. I think I was able to figure out how we would be able to get to about seventeen thirty-eight, which is something that was important. And I'll tell you, not everything in here everybody agrees with. But one, if we take a look at the proposal that we have that's laid on the table, and from what I heard last night, where I think there was a little bit of consensus, almost, but not all the way, if we take a look at that franchise fee, and we move from point five to one percent, we only use, we had two hundred and ten thousand for the fund balance, but stay at that number. The removal of the mechanics position, the removal of the graphics art position, a delay on some fund, general fund hiring, and the reinstatement of the two fire positions. That would bring us down to about seventeen thirty-eight, seventeen point three, and it's option six in your information, seventeen point three eight, three eight, seven, which would hopefully equate to a residential decrease of three point five one percent, would be a commercial industrial decrease of one point two three percent, and a multi-residential decrease of five point seven two percent. It will have an impact on your utility bill, which will be twelve dollars for the net savings. Net savings, that's a hundred dollars per month on a utility bill. So, the net savings would be upwards of twenty-three dollars and twenty-two cents on a hundred dollar monthly bill. This proposal is not perfect by far, but if you take a look at the proposals that I've seen from last night till over the course of time, it seems somewhat geared towards the middle, and it moves the levy rate down to about seventeen thirty-eight, and offers almost a consistent number of lowerings that Mr. Schimpf had offered, but in a different format. So, yes, sir?
I don't, I don't think that any of us have option six.
Oh, that's because I didn't hand it to you.
Where's that?
That's what I get.
Where is it?
I was writing it down, trying to.
Sorry about that, sorry.
I need one more, please, because I put one for Steve here.
Sorry, and it's option six. So, what you have right here are the.
Hands up.
I have been.
Phantom beep.
So, what we did, so you have each one of the different options here, and what we did for each option, Michelle added the annual, annual savings per hundred thousand dollar value of a home. So, it's not perfect. Some folks didn't want this, but what I think I've heard from the audience and the community, and as mayor, it offers a compromise between a lot of different things we've heard over the last couple of days. So, it's not perfect, but it does move us to, I think I heard seventeen thirty-eight yesterday, like Mr. Schimpf had proposed, in option two, without as much of a use of fund balance, but some of it in there as well. So, questions?
Mr. Mayor, what, what, what general fund positions does this delay the hiring on? Is it all the police officers and the firefighters and?
Well, we will have to figure out how we're going to do that. There's a number of different positions, but the ones that it takes, it reinstates the two fire, so we'll have to, we'll have to work on that. So, we'll make it up somehow.
Departmental discretion, kind of, as we move forward. They'll have to figure that out when they're going to bring it to, to us, okay?
It eliminates, it did eliminate the fees, because the, I was thinking the franchise, franchise is a fee. So, instead of doing the across-the-board eight percent, because we probably need to do some type of rate study to see how we're comparable and where we're at cross-section. But that's something I heard council say that we need to take a look at with one of our task force coming up in the near future.
I also have another question for Michelle.
Yes, sir.
Last night, we talked about when I proposed the one point five million in, in reserve funds, we talked about how that would hurt our bond rating, and I've probably received about twenty emails this morning and probably about ten calls. So, what would seven hundred and ten thousand do to our bond rating, in your opinion?
So, we, their chief financial officer, of course, we don't know for a fact about any of that. I'm a little uncomfortable with seven hundred and ten. The half million that we had been using, we typically are able to find other efficiencies throughout the year, so that we don't need all that. We'll have to work a little harder at seven, seven hundred and ten, but I'm certainly, that's far more achievable than the million and a half. It's moving in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle, while you're there, when we are refused the backfill, which we are probably going to be refused, one-third of the backfill, where will that come from again?
We, you have not determined that yet, so we will have to go through, and, I mean, there's three choices. It's reduce expenses, find other sources of revenue, or fund balance. So, those will be your choices yet again if the legislature does take that for fiscal nineteen.
When do we normally find, we normally find out when?
When they adjourn.
Soon.
I celebrate when they adjourn, then they can't do any more damage. We don't know.
So, we still have the potential with the, some of the positions that are there moving forward to take a look at different ways to, to realize that savings somewhere, with your input, of course.
Are you finished?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on.
I have just one more question, Michelle. Then, if we're taking money out of a reserve fund for, to, to help with the backfill, saying we don't get that backfill, I've talked to legislators from both sides of the aisle on this, and they're both, both sides have told me that you're not going to get a third of that backfill, so don't depend on it. That means we're going to be taking more money out of our reserves, so essentially, is that going to end up hurting our bond rating again there? Because we keep talking about this bond rating.
It potentially could, if that's the choice. I haven't heard anybody say that's definitely what we're going to do, but if that's what you choose to do, it would not be a positive thing. I think it's a little bit different to use your reserves for something that hasn't happened yet, because it hasn't happened yet. That, that will likely be the last decision the legislators make. It typically is, when, before they adjourn. So, while, I mean, there are several forces at work here. It's in the governor's bill. It, there is a bill on the Senate floor to reduce it. There's a different bill in the House that reduces it in a different manner, and less, actually. So, there's, there are different options. But yes, we, once we know that for sure, we definitely have to address it some way or another.
So, does Moody's take that into account when they're looking at, do they account for what we use that reserve fund balance for, and say, "Well, that was a little bit more acceptable than this"? They kind of use discretion.
You would need to ask them that, I guess. But I think planning, planning to use it and having it used for things that were not within your control are, are somewhat different. But at the end of the day, any of it reduces it, and we always want to keep that to a minimum. I'm still, my wishes would be to be growing that to twenty-five percent. So, I realize, however, that our citizens want us to provide services, and they also want to reduce costs, and so, this is a compromise we've been at for the last couple of years.
We're at about twenty percent, is that right?
I think we might have dipped slightly below that as of June of seventeen.
Okay.
Because the other thing to remember is, as our expenses grow, twenty percent of a larger number takes a larger number. You almost need growth every year, anyway.
All right, I yield. Mrs. Jewett?
Yeah, I just have questions about your proposal. I'm assuming we're using this, the proposal you originally gave us as the base, which has, as you noted, the seventeen seventy-six, but then it already had a franchise fee in it. Is this now increasing that?
Increasing it to one.
So, okay, then, in increasing the fund balance, but it does restore the two fires?
Yes.
Okay, that's not noted on here, but that does increase the two fire positions, so.
Let's talk about that.
Those dollars aren't in here.
We haven't watched through the options. They're not in there because they were never removed. So, we started with the seventeen seventy-six, and just took out what you needed to take out to get to the seventeen thirty-eight. So, anything.
Reduction wasn't there to start with.
Correct, and neither was the first half percent of the franchise, utility franchise fee. So, anything like that, that was included in the seventeen seventy-six proposal, you won't see on this. This is strictly changes made to it.
The franchise fee was on here.
No, okay.
Am I not reading it right?
In the seventeen seventy-six, it was proposed to increase the franchise fee by half a percent.
Right.
If you look on this, the first row says increase the franchise fee another half percent, so that the total increase is one percent. So, half of a percent is on your sheet, half a percent is not.
And I appreciate that. The two fire, okay, and the fires weren't here. But now, Mr. Mayor, you referenced a proposal from Councilman Schimpf, but you're, what are you following from that? You're not.
Just a number, right?
Just the number?
What?
You're not doing anything with TIF.
We can't do anything with TIF right now, anyway. So, the only, only thing, what, that's, that's further down, that's a further discussion. This is, so, and, and, and what, basically, if I'm, I'm listening to what everyone is saying, and I heard a number, and I heard another number, and I heard another number, and I heard, I've been hearing a lot of numbers, so I'm just trying to figure out how to, no, not trying to, am, come with the consensus of smart people, and come up with something that may not be everything that you want, but it's something.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand the forms, and if I'm reading it right, there was a reduction in the fire on the original form.
That's right. That's what I meant to say, and I think I didn't. So, you're right. There is a reduction of fire that was in the seventeen seventy-six.
Yeah.
But it's not an additional reduction, nor is it.
But I thought we were going to restore those two positions. We're not?
There could be. That could be another option on the table.
They're not restored?
I understood.
No. No.
Oh, that's, that's wrong, then. Those, those need to be restored. Those need to be restored. Counsel, I apologize.
That's the reason I'm asking questions.
Thank you so much.
So, we've got to add two hundred and fourteen thousand and seventy dollars back into this proposal.
Yes, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the direction on that.
So, sorry about that, audience. The mayor makes mistakes, too.
And the other reductions that are included in this base include other things. I think there's something from leisure and parks. There's over, there's what, one full-time position and several part-time positions there, if I understand correctly. Are there any other reductions in this base budget that we're working off of?
So, the base budget that was presented to you March fifth had total reductions of a million dollars on the four, a four-page budget adjustment that was handed out.
The only staff positions, though, are, we're restoring the fire and the leisure and parks. Are there any other staff reductions reflected in this?
Why don't we have each of the departments tell you?
Yeah, and that, that's the exercise we did when there was two point five and five percent reduction. Staff told you exactly what it meant. But Paul?
Mr. Mayor, while Paul's coming over there, the one thing that was.
I'm going to recognize Mr. Hudding, please.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Just to clarify what we incorporated into our budget cuts that were part of the proposal before we started our last meeting, I'll just read to you what I presented to my board, and that was my understanding of where we were, our starting point. Eliminate forestry specialist position, eliminate seasonal downtown position, reduce contracted services lines, eliminate golf starter positions, reduce golf seasonal maintenance, eliminate sports training budget, decrease in arena part-time help, reduce arena contracted maintenance line items, and just various other lines. So, that kind of covers where I thought we were, and what I had informed my board of, and this was covered during my presentation to you folks.
And Paul, Paul, that, so that's a reduction of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars from your?
It is. It's a little confusing, because we're also making up for revenues that are, that we're projecting to come in below what they have been, based on recent history. So, that, that is also accounted for.
Thank you, Paul.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Morrissey?
So, in this, we're removing that mechanic position, and that is a position that was his controversy that started on February fifth. I believe it's that position, is that correct?
We're removing the mechanic position.
Okay, and that's, I, I, like, if Sandy Greco could speak to that, Mr. Mayor, about what that means, what that will mean for Central Garage, what will, that will mean to our fleet of mechanics, what that will mean to public safety, having their vehicles serviced when they need to be serviced, as well as what has been talked about in the past, is why aren't, why haven't we talked about outsourcing, which I know we talked about last year? So, if Sandy would be allowed to speak to those, I would really appreciate it.
Sandy, if you can talk about the mechanic and not the politics.
Sandy Greco, Interpublic Works Director. The mechanic position is important, very important to us at this time. Right now, since July, we've done about a hundred and forty-seven hours of overtime, and I limit that as much as I can, only in emergency situations, or breakdowns, or we have to be out plowing, or other situations where a garbage truck is down, that we need it back the next day, will I approve overtime? So, I try to keep it at a minimum when I can, but another, and also with fire trucks and stuff, we, Daryl does work overtime to get an ambulance back out on the street if it comes in, in the afternoon, and it can be fixed at that time. We have done research with other cities. They do not outsource Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Cedar Falls, Dubuque. They recommend that we don't at all. We talked to them quite a bit about why, and I do have reasons on the paper that I handed out. Also, I mean, I'm not going to read our whole reasons why we need another mechanic, but it's, it's very essential, especially when you come to public safety, which is fire and police. Public safety is also street, especially during snow removal time. It's also during floods. We do a lot of flood work. Our mechanics work on pumps, everything to keep the system going. We work with sewer department. We have, I, I didn't bring with me, but off the top of my head, over four hundred, between four and five hundred pieces of equipment and vehicles that we do repair on, and we do not outsource unless it's absolutely necessary, where we would need to take a garbage truck to, say, Cedar Rapids, and have it worked on, because it's under warranty yet. We run two shifts. We run mechanics from six o'clock in the morning till eleven o'clock at night, and we constantly are busy. We do have a backlog, and we're working our best to catch up. Right now, things are a little, I can't say slow, but we don't have the snow emergency vehicles in. We do have fire, fire and ambulances right now, but we always have end loaders from sewer department. We always have street sweepers. We're getting them ready to go out again. We're getting the grinders and the screeners ready for the yard waste site, which will open April first. So, there's, there's always heavy-duty equipment that we're working on, and it's, it's essential, but it's, it's up to the council to decide.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sandy, has this position become any less critical than when we discussed it a year ago?
No, it has not. We waited until the new budget was effective in July, and started the process in August, and by the time, brought it to council, and by the time we went through civil service and advertised and interviewed, and picked candidates, it, it just takes quite a while.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, if we were to add in the two, so, on the original base of seventeen seventy-six, we were filling two, we weren't laying anybody off. We were filling two unfilled fire positions, and we were choosing not to fill two other unfilled fire positions. So, on this new one that goes down to seventeen thirty-eight, then, if I'm following.
That's wrong.
It would be about a dime more, right? It'd be about seventeen forty-eight, is that what?
Seventeen four seven eight two one.
Seventeen four seven. Which would still be a nearly thirteen cent decrease in the levy rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., are you done?
Yeah.
Sir.
I yield.
Ms. Greco, is it possible that that mechanic position, which I've come to understand how critical it is, is it possible that could come from road use or local option? And not property tax?
That would be up to Michelle. I mean, we charge back to the other departments for road use and local option.
Which includes sewer and...
Local option and road use and sanitation.
So some of that position is already going to be paid for by local option, right, Michelle? Are you the...
Not local option, but it's charged to sewer, sanitation, and road use tax. And we charge quite a bit of our Central Garage to those funding streams, but they also repair general-funded vehicles for police and fire. And those, you know, the sewer fund really probably shouldn't have to pay for a fire or police car repair.
No, I appreciate that. But when we were talking about this position, did you have an opportunity to determine how much of that position would be paid for by non-property tax sources?
The whole department is paid 60% by non-property tax.
So we're only talking about general fund would be 40% of it approximately?
Yes. But we're taking, as we remove the position, it's all coming out of the general fund side right now.
Okay, but it wouldn't if the position was maintained? In, in actuality, if there was that position filled, it would only be about 40%?
It would be the amount that's on your sheet. Because I've already accounted for...
Oh, you've already taken that out?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes, um, thank you, Sandy. And regarding this remove the graphic arcs position, I would like to have Kent Schenkel, if he would, speak to, um, what doing that? If that was to pass, what would, uh, what would that mean to this Center for the Arts and providing the services in this very important quality of life, um, department that we have for the city of Waterloo?
Excuse me, I have a little bit of laryngitis, so bear with me. Excuse me. Our, our department has a total of 12 full-time employees in it, so that represents a little bit, close to 10%, not quite, um, of our, our workforce. We serve 157,000 people a year, and we host or present over 1,000 events a year. So our staff, each position is pretty specialized. Um, the, the graphic design position is a person who has knowledge of illustration and graphic design programs that's unique to our staff. It's not something that other staff members have. Consequence, consequently, um, we can't just fill those duties by shifting those to other people. Our department has a, a budget of about 20,000 a year for marketing. And, you know, when we're offering services to the community, if we can fund those services, um, we also have to be able to get the information out to people so that they know of, of those programs, and they can take advantage of those. And this position is key to being able to do that. If, with the elimination of this, um, position, um, we would, I, I can't tell you exactly what all the ramifications will be at this point, but there would be some impacts on services. Because, um, you know, we simply can't take that out of the mix. We will still have to produce some materials, and we'll have to find a way to do that. So, um, if we need to contract for those, we'll have to shift some other budget items. Look at doing that down, um, after the fact so that we can cover the costs of that. I don't know if that clarifies things. Certainly, we understand.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Have you ever, um, in the last couple of years, received any council discretionary funds?
To the, to this Waterloo Center for the Arts?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have to the Center for the Arts.
So if there were, because we do some things about promotion. It's focused on quality of life, uh, bringing events, cultural activities, and a myriad of different types of things that the center does to enhance Waterloo. If there was a way to utilize some of that funding, could you be able to at least utilize some resources to get the marketing and promotions and different things that you're doing done?
Certainly, we will look at all options. I think, you know, if you look at our department, over the years, we have voluntarily, you know, uh, each year put in a budget looking at ways that we could make cuts. And if you look at this year, um, we put in, um, pretty realistic, workable solutions to take a 5% cut, which, um, you know, in the original budget that the mayor proposed, um, we, we were looking at a 5% cut. With the elimination of this position, um, that takes our department's cut to well over 10%. But at any rate, we will find a way to continue forward and look at other funding options, and as I say, shifting, um, you know, our budget to the extent that we can to cover those. We'll continue to provide as much services to the community as possible. But, you know, honestly, it will be a challenge without that position.
More questions. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, um, thanks, Kent. And, and my understanding from the budget sessions that we had was that, Kent had, um, come up with all sorts of different things that he was going to do to meet those 2.5 and 5%. And, uh, did that in such a way that, um, it was able to maintain the services of the, uh, Center for the Arts as much as possible where they are prior to doing that 2.5 and 5% reduction. And now what this is doing, as Kent had just said, is it's taking that cut, which is what we suspected to well over, uh, 10% for one of our quality of life, one of our 2.09 cents on that $17.76, uh, for all the other general revenue departments. And I, I, that's basically unequal, um, treatment for the different departments, especially those that people come to Waterloo to enjoy. Uh, and I, I definitely could not support that. Uh, the o- the other thing is, uh, the delay for general fund hiring replacements. I, I need to know what positions this affects and how long a delay, two things. What positions and how long of delays are we talking, Mr. Mayor?
I just figured about $60,000 in reductions because by not submitting proposals during the date that the mayor asked to do, then this leads to not having that. But Michelle, can you?
I, I think I can expand on that.
Hold on a second. Can we take a couple of seconds just to shift microphones down since Mr. Schmidt's here? Thank you.
Oh, these aren't not ours?
Yeah.
Sure, can you shift them up?
Yes.
Michelle?
Need to note that he's here.
And for the record, uh, Mr. Schmidt is now in attendance, so. Thank you, sir. Physical attendance.
So we were discussing the concerns about delaying general fund hiring replacements. The, the reality is, and Sandy alluded to it when she talked about replacing the mechanic. Civil service process is a lengthy process. It is very common that someone that we don't know today is gonna be gone, resign. It, it, we can't replace them overnight. We can't replace them in two weeks. So while I can't tell you exactly which positions might take a little longer, I know there are a few that there will be a little gap in there. And I, I feel confident, I think, that we will see those kind of savings sometime during fiscal 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, everyone could come back up here and make their department case. I mean, we could do that again. We've heard them all. I've, I have listened to every single one of them very carefully. I, I, I see places like the library where they've been cut to the bone so much that there's just no bone left. And, um, my whole thought in this process is shared sacrifice, shared amongst all of us. But in my opinion, none of these proposals show active loss of numbers in the Fire and Police Department. The guys that are on the street now will be on the street tomorrow. We're talking about vacancies that have been here for quite a while that we might not fill or delay filling. I just think unless we're all in on shared sacrifice, then that, that sows the seeds of bitterness. So even in the smallest way, people have gotta kick in a little to make this whole thing float. That's all I want. Fairness and shared sacrifice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I had some calls on this just last night and this morning. I just wanna make it clear. With the proposals that all of us talked about, no policeman was being laid off, no firefighter was being laid off. And I don't know who started tho- that, those rumors, but that was never the case here. Recently, as you are aware, the council has hired three policemen, and we just hired three firefighters. In this budget right here, we're actually hiring additional four policemen and additional three firefighters. So we're adding to public safety going forward. So I wanna make sure that we have that upfront.
Four firefighters. You'd be hiring four firefighters.
It's, uh, re- staffing, this return back to the, the staffing level, so you're right.
I'm kinda backing up to where, I'm looking back to the proposed 1776. We were still looking at hiring a medical firefighter and two firefighters. So that's three firefighters and four policemen. So we are, I think we are sharing it, but we are adding it.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following where you're seeing that.
Those are to fill vacancies, so it's kinda different than adding. We're not adding any new positions to the budget. But we were filling vacancies.
If you look at the list of vacant positions, we were in full support to add four policemen and, and, uh, two firefighters and one medical, um, a medical supervisor. We'll, we'll say medical supervisor, which is a form, uh, you know, Pat could explain that. So a medical supervisor and two firefighters to the fire department. So that's happening, at least backing up a little bit. Just to back up, I had some more calls on TIF. Uh, we really cannot pull funds from TIF. That really thwarts our efforts of growing. Um, and a lot of folks have called and expressed their concerns that we do not pull our TIF. That's our future, uh, potential to, um, build, to build our, our development areas. What I simply was trying to do last night is have a, a compromise. Uh, I did not really want a franchise fee increase at all. We're at 3% now. But I did offer that as a compromise, as a, as a half percent to kinda bring us together a little bit. So that'd been $450,000 additional, uh, in my view, it's a tax, um, to actually bring this together. We don't wanna take that much more from our fund balance, which is really our reserves. And we don't wanna take from TIF. So that's really where we're at. What I would suggest we do is we take option six. So we're all on the same page. We take option six, which is pretty solid, and we, we move the franchise fee back down to a half a percent, which would take us to seven, roughly $17.58 as a levy rate. So we keep the franchise increase to only a half a percent as opposed to 1%. Doesn't raise taxes. No one gets laid off. We kinda shore ourselves up. Doesn't raid the reserve fund, doesn't take money from TIF. Adds four policemen, adds three firefighters. I, I think it's a sensible approach, as we say about shared sacrifice and trying to pull it all together. All the departments have cut. And I think it's a way to kinda pull it all together. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor? If I can ask two questions. Uh, first of all, I think, let's, let's clarify, we're not adding police and fire. We're filling the unfilled positions, is what I understood Michelle to say. Just so that there's no understand, misunderstanding.
We have a list of unfilled positions that we're gonna fill four police and three firefighters.
Well, you're filling them. That's different than adding them. But, in, in my mind, in my mind.
I'm trying to clarify a rumor that we were laying off police and firefighters, which is absolutely not the truth, so.
And then I'm just confused, if we reduce the franchise fee, as you suggest, from one, reduce the increase by, from 1% to .5. Right now, the proposal in front of us, adding in the two fire, was 1747. If you're reducing the franchise fee, how does that increase the levy?
This proposal does not add in the two fire.
Yeah, I, that was a mistake.
I know, but we just added it, I was saying, if we add the two fire, that brings it to 1747. Your, your increase, your tax levy was even more than that. And I'm just confused, if you didn't have the fire in there and you reduced the franchise fee, how did you get to a higher rate?
Option six does not have the two fire in it.
Okay, which makes it then 1738.
So we're gonna basically add, we're basically gonna add 20 cents to that, which is really the other half percent of the franchise increase. So we're only gonna increase the franchise fee half a percent as opposed to one.
But that would, in, that would decrease.
Let's, let's, let's...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're good, it, we're good, just, let's, let's talk.
We're roughly adding 20 cents to the levy rate by not taxing, by not adding the full 1% to the franchise tax.
The, uh, option six, I, I needed stated, that was, I thought we had the two fire. The, um, added those back in there, but it goes up to 17.
Let me give you two different options. So what I think Mr. Jacobs is suggesting doesn't, doesn't fill the two fire and eliminate the franchise fee, and I think that gets to 17.58219. Is that about where you were?
Right.
Okay. If you want to eliminate the increase in the franchise, or limit the increase in the franchise fee to half a percent and add the two fire, then your levy rate is 17.67653.
Did you say 17.6753?
17.67653. Lots of numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there any further discussion from any of the council members?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Ken? Mr. Morrison?
I still haven't had the question answered about what positions are affected by the delay in general fund hiring.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to know that.
I believe the answer was, you're not really sure, but you anticipate retirements or terminations, and that the gap between that last day of service and the first day for a new person would be a delay that cumulatively would equal $60,000. Is that correct, Michelle?
That's correct.
Do you know how many, uh, do you have an idea of how many retirements might be coming up this year?
I, I do not, off the top of my head. I know there are a few. There are just a few you hear about.
And, and I also was wondering, um, as far as the library is concerned, if Mr., yeah, Steve Nielsen is here, how, um, these, uh, if this budget were to pass, how this would affect the library? Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Nielsen that?
Stephen Nielsen, Library Director. The budget that you have in front of you today, uh, we basically lose a senior manager. So the manager over Adult Services and Reference, I will assume those duties. I'll be the director and, uh, Adult Services Manager at the same time. That's the only way we could do it and keep accreditation. Uh, if we did any other cuts, we'd drop below the 61 hours and lo- accredit, uh, lose accreditation, so.
Okay, and, and, uh, Mr. Nielsen, on the, um, mayor's budget, it lists, um, a loss of $43,621. How is, how is that? I mean, what, what, what does that mean? What does that affect?
Uh, that is the senior manager position that's paid out of the city line.
That you're going to be doing, so you'd be doing two things, director and being this Mike, old Mike Dargan job?
Yeah, but with no additional fees, so we'll save those monies by cutting that position.
And actually, I think I need to correct that. So that $43,000 was revenue that we used to receive because we shared positions with Cedar Falls. Cedar Falls. We stopped doing that, so we removed the revenue. I think in the mayor's proposal, there no longer is any reduction in staffing. So the library has actually added administrative staff, about .758 tenths of a full-time equivalent position. I don't believe there are losses. If I, I've seen so many proposals in the last three weeks, but that, as it stands today, I believe that's what it is.
But, Mr. Mayor, yet at the same time, Mike Dargan's position is going to be eliminated or absorbed into the director's position?
And to make up for that loss of revenue.
And that was a part-time position?
60%, Waterloo and 40% Cedar Falls.
Did we get money, so what did we get from Cedar Falls from that position?
What I'm saying is, I think that we changed the proposal not to affect that position, so.
So that position still could be filled?
I believe that's what's in here.
But he has to make up for that loss of revenue somehow. My understanding is he was going to make up for it by not hiring that position.
That is what he was going to do, but based on all the feedback we got, I don't believe that is a requirement today, going from the mayor's proposal into option six. I don't think there's a reduction there. So I think we've basically fixed it. We put two pennies on the tax levy.
Not on here, Pat.
It's confusing, because we've looked at so many options, but I believe based on feedback that we had, that we've.
So we've eliminated that $43,621 amount?
The reduction side of it.
Okay, so that's no wonder.
I have to take the revenue out, because we're not going to get the revenue. When we first presented the budgets, departments were asked to provide you the impacts of the 2.5% net reduction in tax askings, I can't say that today either, and a 5% reduction in tax asking. So when the library had to do the 2.5%, they had to absorb, just as leisure services, leisure services taking some extreme reductions because they're covering their revenue shortfalls, and then they had to also do a 2.5% tax asking reduction. The library is not, no longer being asked to do that, I don't believe.
So, Mr. Mayor?
We have Mr. Schmidt, and then you, Mr. Amos.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I missed a meeting last night. And I've gotten quite a few calls and decks and emails about conversations and, I'm sorry, I just said, I'm sorry, I missed the meeting last night, and I've been kept somewhat in the loop by a variety of you out there, and fellow council members emailing me or texting me or calling me about some of the conversations, some of the suggestions. I would also like to thank a number of the department heads that I've talked to or have responded to our requests and have made some, what I think are just very, very substantial contributions to this discussion. I find it unfortunate that that has not been across the entire city. I'm very frustrated by that. I share Councilmember Klein's belief that whatever it is we're going to do needs to be a shared sacrifice. I do believe that some of the suggestions about the economic development impact, philosophically, I would tend to support some of those, but I think those are more for down the road as we talk about potentially taking some money out of the TIF, like Cedar Falls did recently. I think that would be an ultimate goal, but I don't think we're to that point yet. And I think the whole world in Waterloo right now revolves around economic development. If we don't do everything we can do to continue to drive economic development in Waterloo, we are doomed. Because we're not heading in the right direction in a number of different fronts, I'm sorry to say that, but we're in some. So God bless us, we're, you know, we're doing well there, but there's some other areas where we're not. And the frustration I have, having been on this council for 11 years, is so much of this conversation we're having today is the same conversation we've been having for 11 years. We just continue to kick the can down the road. We continue to look for another pocket to pull money out of our taxpayers rather than saying, what are we going to do to fix the systemic problems we have in the city of Waterloo? And we've been through a number of mayors, we've been through a number of city councils that during election time, we're going to change the way we do things, and it doesn't happen. We have our strategic goals and people just chuckle about our goal for TIFs, because that was never a realistic goal for some council members, and that's why they laugh about it. And until we are willing to do that, I really just think we're wasting your time and ours. One of my daughters lives in Seattle. I think Seattle would be acknowledged as one of the more progressive areas of the country. She had a fender bender. She and the young lady that they had their fender bender with got out, exchanged insurance cards, part-of-company friends, and everything's being taken care of. In Waterloo, I get off the Leo Roof Expressway over here in front of Bridges on a Friday afternoon, there's a fender bender, there's two vehicles pulled up alongside the curb, there's two fire trucks, an ambulance, and two police cars sitting there. Now, something's not right, and we have talked, and I love our police department, and I love our fire department, but we have talked with our managers about looking at what the rest of the world is doing, and they just refuse. They just scoff at what everybody else is doing. We know better. But in Cedar Falls, 43% of their budget is public safety. Ours is somewhere between 75 and 80. Now, how you expect all the rest of these departments to be able to absorb that kind of a load, and they aren't even willing to talk, they aren't even willing to look, they aren't willing to consider anything, I just think is absolutely irresponsible. I'm so frustrated about this, and I'm sorry, I'm going to be getting some heat, because I've had some wonderful friends of mine call me, leave me voicemails, Mr. Shipman, I'm sorry, didn't get a chance to call you back, I ran out of time, about the concern of our public safety. But four or five years ago, we had an opportunity where there were three open fire and three open police, as I remember. Mayor, I believe you're on the council time, and we chose not to backfill those for a year. We were told the world was going to come to an end, there was going to be chaos in the streets, city was going to burn down, and I believe at the end of the year, it wasn't a bad year. I think I got a quote in the Courier about the streets of Waterloo did not turn into tombstone. And that's the reality. We've got to learn how to do things more efficiently. I think our managers need to be brought in for a real stern conversation, and they need to be made aware of the fact, they're going to be expected to do more with less, or they probably should be looking for another place of employment. I mean, I think we're to that point. And I understand that's not my position, because I am not the mayor, but I do believe that this last election, the folks that were elected, were elected for a reason, and I think it's because the majority of the taxpayers out there see we cannot continue to do what we're doing. It's just, it's not feasible. You've got to look at the numbers.
Mrs. Juwan. Oh, Mr. Amos, then, Mr. Juwan.
I forgot what the question was.
There was no question.
I'm sorry. I've been driving. It was just basically, my question was about the library. So what I'm hearing is, is that the library, there is no impact on the library in your proposal?
Other than loss of revenue.
Other than that loss of revenue, there will not be a personnel drop or anything like that. That's not required, is that what I'm hearing?
But our director, if I'm not mistaken, is going to take over the adult services manager position. I'm not hearing that, Michelle, is that, or?
I believe that was changed. There's a delay in hiring on an assistant, and I believe that's all, same as you had last year.
So in the 17, 17, the 17, what was that number, Councilman Jacobs?
38, 39.
So the one with the 5.5%?
With the fire positions, Mayor?
Yeah.
1758.
1747.
With the fire positions, it's 1758.219. Without the fire positions, it's, whoops, wait a minute. I apologize. With, I need to delete the text. 1758219 is without, without fire. Let me get this straight this time. With fire, it's 1767653. Doesn't work when you try to hurry. And that reduces the franchise fee to a half percent increase.
Okay, Mrs. Juwan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I just would like to briefly address Councilman Schmidt's comments in that I've heard from a lot of people, I know we all have, but I've worked with the city for a long time as well, and I believe that our department heads are doing an exceptional job with basically bare bones. They have been cut over the years significantly. Just look at the number of staff people that we're talking about from the past to now. And I just want to commend the department heads for doing a great job. I don't know that they can cut much more, and I believe the city is moving in the right direction, contrary to Steve's comments. I believe that we are making progress, and my concern is I don't want to impede that progress. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I hope we continue to do so. And I want to thank the department heads, and the people I heard from really want the services that they're currently being provided. And so to cut those, I think will really hurt a lot of our citizens who believe very strongly in everything that the city is providing. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Let me say 15.
15, sure.
Second. Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Ready? Motion to reconvene?
Two minutes.
I resent my motion.
Veen? Second. The motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion at this point in time to amend the resolution adopting a fiscal year 19 budget with the total tax levy rate of 17.7326 in property and excise tax askings in the amount of $41,95,303 to the following. That the levy rate be reduced to 17.49 with the appropriate tax askings in the following ways. Using your budget, those four pages or two pages, either both sides, we would keep all positions in the fire department, total 214,070. Human Rights Department cuts eliminated 6677. We would restore leisure services, the full-time forestry at 52,000, restore seasonal downtown maintenance at 8,000, and restore the golf starters, 50% of them, at 26,000. And we would increase the franchise fee from five cents to, or from a half a penny to a full penny, or 450,000. We would do property tax affected license and fees would drop from 8% down to 4%. And we would use the 2017 unused budget and fund balance of 210,000. And that would get us to that 17.49 adjusted rate that I am asking to be the amendment to what was the resolution that started us off today.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, motion fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make an amendment to option six.
Well, you got to go from the one that's on the.
Okay, so to amend item one by including the total tax levy rate in property and excise tax askings in the read-as files, which read, resolution adopting a fiscal year 19 budget with a total tax levy rate of 17.7326 in property and excise tax askings in the amount of $41,95,303. To option nine, which in a sense, that was just handed out to us, so what we're going to do with option nine is we're going to have a 1% franchise tax. We're going to move 210,000 from the fund balance. It does remove a position, the mechanic position and graphic arts position.